Okay, call this Village of Green Hills Council Meeting for September 24th, 2024 to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Borna?
Here.
Ms. Water?
Here.
Ms. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Coulter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
We have a prayer by Maria Walther.
This was dedicated for all men in uniform and women in uniform that defend our country under moments of peril. Oh God, our heavenly Father, you have blessed us with brave men and women who are willing to defend our freedom. May your protection and grace surround them each day. Let your healing hand be upon those who suffer wounds and injuries, mental or physical. May those who have made the ultimate sacrifice rest in forever in your holy presence. Comfort their families who mourn and are left to remember the precious lives of their loved ones. Help us to honor and support them. Let us ever be mindful of each sacrifice made on behalf of the American people by our sons, daughters, husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, and friends. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes of the previous council meeting, September the 10th, 24. If there are no corrections, the minutes stand as approved.
Yes, sir.
All right, this time we have swearing in. Patrol Officer Anthony Pope.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to take a minute to introduce Anthony Pope, Tony Pope, A.J. Pope, two different names. He comes to us, he started on, actually Labor Day was his first day as sworn in as a law enforcement officer. We're excited to have Anthony. He has been down at Corrections working for the Sheriff's Department for three years. So that training down there is valuable. A job that I would not want could not do down there, to be honest with you. So we look forward to that and what he brings here, dealing with inmates and being able to talk and stuff like that. Tony comes from a family of law enforcement. His father is a lieutenant with Forest Park Department, 26 years. So he knows what he's getting into and we're benefiting from everything he's learned from his father through the years. So we're real excited to have Tony here. So with that, Mayor, if you don't mind, a ceremony or a swearing in.
And on September the 2nd, 2024, you were commissioned as a police officer for the Village of Green Hills Police Department pursuant to Section 5.11 of the Charter of Green Hills of Ohio. As such, you're required to swear or affirm the following. Repeat after me. Hi, Anthony J. Pope.
Hi, Anthony J. Pope.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio.
The Charter and ordinances of the Village of Green Hills.
The Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Green Hills.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I will discharge the duties of police officer.
I will discharge the duties of police officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Stop.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited to be here, learned so much so far, and I'm excited to keep learning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, Jennifer Wykert from the Green Hills Branch Library.
Good evening, how are you all tonight? Good, thank you. Doing well, keeping busy, as always over there at Green Hills. I don't know if you've been there, but the new Forest Park Branch is now open and is lovely. However, we are still in our current location and we are still open Monday through Wednesday 10:00 to 8:00 p.m. and then Thursday through Saturday 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. So do feel free to stop by and see us at any point in those hours. Just wanted to touch base on a couple of things we've got coming up here at the library. There's some important voting deadlines that are beginning up and I just wanted to kind of go over them a little bit. October 7th is the deadline for anybody who needs to register to vote and any library location can help you with that in Hamilton County. Early in-person voting begins October 8th and October 29th is the deadline to get your absentee application in to vote by mail. And of course, the election is on Tuesday, November 5th. And we have a lot of resources that can help you with at the library, including the League of Women Voters Guides should be gotten to our distribution center on October 7th, so we hope to have them at all of the branches a few days later. And also sample ballots are now available from Hamilton County Board of Elections. So if you wanted to go online or visit the library, we have computers as well and we can help you access what anybody's specific ballot would say so that you can do any research that you might want to do and see what's on it for you. We also have introduced a brand-new library visit challenge. We have 41 locations across the county and there is a list of 41 locations. All the libraries have this, including us, so feel free to stop by and pick it up. Each place has a little feature for each library, including returning items in our big red book drop. But you can take this and as you go to all of the different libraries, just check it off that you've seen and visited one of those. And if you complete all 41, you can get the nifty button that I'm wearing right at the moment. After 22 years, I do believe I have been to all of them at this point. We also have some programs that are coming up that should be a lot of fun in October. Our story times continue on Mondays at 10:30 a.m. We do have a new series that we're starting, a tabletop gaming series. So that's going to be on the first Saturday of each month at 3:00 p.m. and that's for teens and adults, anybody from board games, collaborative card games, anything like that. We're kind of seeing what would be of interest. So if you have any desire for that, if you stop in on October 5th at 3:00 p.m., we'll be getting that started a little bit and we want to see what's of interest for our community members. We also have ghost rocks for kids on Thursday, October 10th at 4:30 p.m. where they can paint a rock to look like a ghost. And then we're going to have a hands-on chemistry demonstration for all ages on Wednesday, October 23rd at 6:30 p.m. And then some of you will remember last year JT Townsend, a local author, came and discussed the Patty Rebels murders. And he will be returning to discuss the Bricka family murders on Wednesday, October 30th at 6:30 p.m. And we also have teens can create a mini haunted house on Thursday, October 24th at 4:00 p.m. That one has limited supplies, so if you're interested, make sure you sign up so that I know that I have enough for everybody. We also have fun new equipment. I don't know if people have visited yet, but we have a brand-new self-check machine. It's all freestanding and all of the libraries will be getting new equipment within the next month or so. But we do have that. We also have a brand-new AED that was installed two days ago, I think, maybe yesterday. It was yesterday because it's Monday. But that's brand-new and is now another resource that is in our branch and we hope that we will never have to use it, but it is very good that we know that it's there in case it is needed. We also do have that study room and it's smaller. It can hold two people comfortably, three people is cozy. But if anybody needs like a place to get away from the house for a little bit, to have your mind stretch, if you need to meet one-on-one with somebody, this is a resource that's available right here in Green Hills. And you can go online to our website to reserve it or you can stop in and we'll be happy to help you reserve it as well. And Wild Forest Park does have two large meeting rooms and at least four study rooms of varying sizes. The fact that it's right here and you can just walk to it if you live in the community is a real bonus or a thing for the community here. So thank you so much. That's what we have coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer, thank you so much for everything you do. You constantly inventing new things to keep people interested and this is not an easy task. I know it takes to plan a whole month's worth and you do a marvelous job. I really appreciate you.
Well, thank you and we do hope that they will be enjoyed by the whole community.
Thank you. Okay, next, Chief Tony Spade, Green Hills Fire Department.
Thank you, everybody. I have a short report tonight. Just a couple of notes. The first thing I wanted to mention was a life member, Dr. Ken Fear, passed away a couple weeks ago and we laid him to rest last Monday and Tuesday. Doc Fear, some of you may remember or know or not know that he had his dental practice in the shopping center for many, many years. He was in the offices above where the restaurant is now, used to be a bank. And then he moved his practice down to Compton Road and served the citizens of Green Hills as a local dentist for many, many years. He was a volunteer for us from 1974 to 1996, so he served 22 years. So I just wanted to pass that along and prayers to his friends and family. I ran into former police chief John Selman at the funeral and he said to make sure that I said hello to him. He's doing really well. But our condolences to the Fear family. Just a reminder that the State Fire Marshal did issue a statewide burn ban. Hamilton County was not included in that. However, it's still dry in Hamilton County. Now, a day of less than an inch of rain will help that, but that certainly doesn't solve the problem. So we follow the Ohio State Fire Code as we always have with burning. If people want to have a small recreational fire in a metal container, such as you would buy at a big box store, and have a garden hose available and make sure it's attended and they're burning seasoned firewood only, no leaves, no sticks, no branches, yard waste, those kind of things, that is permitted. But we would ask that people remember that. We've had just a couple of incidences that we have responded to and we deal with those on a case-by-case basis. And so everybody, for the most part, has done a very good job in the village with that. Hydrant maintenance is wrapping up. We have 173 fire hydrants in town that we've been checking for the last probably two months and so we're going to wrap that up here within the next week or so. Mr. Mayor and Ms. Kovak, I'll be pleased to tell you that we've had very few problems so the maintenance costs for the hydrants this year should be minimal.
Agreed.
Just wanted to kind of bring people up to date for some activities going on. As I previously reported, we have six of our members who are currently taking the firefighter one class. We're doing that, that's a joint venture between us and Glendale Fire Department. They'll be finishing that up in mid-November, so we've got six folks who are basically giving every Wednesday and every Saturday for about five months to complete that. So I want to thank them for that. Myself and Assistant Chief Meister will be attending an incident management conference next week in Sharonville. Bobby Bear, one of our members, is currently in the fire safety inspector class and I want to congratulate Caleb Sales. Caleb is one of our members who is also a full-time firefighter, paramedic with the city of Sharonville. He just recently passed his paramedic class and test, so congratulations to Caleb. October is a very busy time of the month for us, busy time of the year, I should say. So we are currently planning on our Activities for Fire Prevention Week, which is the first full week of October. As usual, our folks led by Lieutenant Julie Sheets will be in the preschools and so on and so forth, teaching the kids about fire safety. And we usually host a group or two over at the fire station. We don't have an elementary school in town any longer, but we do a lot of work in conjunction with Forest Park to also bring the message to them as well. We will also be at Harvest Fest on October 26th. We will be there for the whole time, participating in that. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the fire levy. There are two election forums coming up on October 2nd and 8th on Waycross that myself and I think Jeff, you'll be with me on one of those and I don't know who else. So there'll be two informational forums on Waycross to go over that and answer questions. We do have levy signs that should be in by the end of the week. I have a signup sheet here, thanks to Jeff Alter. If anybody loses a bill or would like to display a yard sign, please sign and when those come in, we will deliver and put it in your yard and then after the election we'll pick it up. So I will leave that here. We also have a flyer, an informational flyer that I've been working on. It's 90-plus percent done. Those should be printed up before the end of the week or so. We have plans to distribute those among the village. We'll have those available at Harvest Fest and then we will also pass those out door-to-door sometime between now and the election day. We will still have a turkey raffle this year, so just right after Election Day, firefighters will be out delivering the envelopes with the turkey raffle tickets. As you know, we do continue to try to raise money to pay for big-ticket items and things that it costs us to maintain fire and EMS service in the village. So as you know, the cost of everything has gone up and so those monies come in really, really important handy. So unless anyone has any questions for me, I would again urge everyone to vote yes for the fire levy on the 5th. And I have, I can answer any questions if you have any. Other than that, that would conclude my report for tonight.
Where are the flyers going to be made available once you have them?
We're going to hand them out door-to-door. We're going to be having, we'll hand them out at Harvest Fest and we'll have them at our booth. It will also be posted on our Facebook page and we'll do our best to make those available. If you have any ideas or want to help us in any way about how we can get the message out there, by all means, let me know. We're happy to do that. Yes, ma'am.
When we sign in there, we only sign for one sign or we sign for more than one sign? I have several people are asking me about it. So if I put 10 signs, would they be 10 signs?
Sign up, sign up just for one, but if you knew who they are and their address, go ahead and put them on there.
Okay, all right.
Yep, thank you. Anything else? Appreciate everyone's support.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Reports of municipal officials, the municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to talk about some of the legislation that's on your agenda tonight, the first one being ordinance. This is written as an emergency, which I know we don't like to do, but this truly has turned into a, as the attorney would say, real and present emergency that we have to deal with. You're familiar with the situation we've been working on under the pool garage deck. The more that we clear the beams, the more we're seeing that they're very deteriorated. We originally thought we'd be doing three or four beams. We're now up to 12 or 13. So we wanted to, you might want to explain this process, you could probably do it better than I, but go ahead.
Well, sure. I think the primary issue to make sure council is aware of is that typically on an expenditure of this level, you would have to go through the formal, you know, advertising and competitive bidding process. There is a provision though in the charter that says if council recognizes that something is, and I think it does say, clear and present emergency, that with the majority of council approving it, it does authorize the manager to proceed quickly to begin the project without having to wait and go through the, what can be a lengthy process of competitive bids. Obviously, we would like to competitively bid things when we can, but this is, I think this may be the only time in all the years that I've been here that we've had something that we've recognized is so potentially dangerous that we need to act without the time to do the bidding. So that's some of what you'll, when the legislation comes up, that's, it does have some sort of extra language that's in there to comply with that charter provision.
Thanks. We also have some assessments on and it's also the annual resolution of accepting the amounts and rates that the Budget Commission, Hamilton County Budget Commission gives us. If you have any questions for that, Deb's here with us tonight. And then the final one is a resolution to an issue that's been outstanding for quite a while up near our housing project. So that's on your agenda for passage tonight as well. We can answer more questions in the time that you have. On other news, our leaf collection starts October 1st and runs through December 9th. Not a minute too soon, all those dry leaves. A lot of them have come down, it's amazing. I want to mention that the demolition of Beechwood Schools will start, I believe they're actually going to start October 11th, although starting early in October, they're giving our police and fire the opportunity to go in there and do some training on the facility. So residents, if you see some people coming in and out of the building, they're authorized to be there or see the PD or SWAT, I think is going to be there practicing. It's all for training, so be aware of that. Also, we have had some people wonder about their bricks that I guess at one point in time they had a fundraiser that involved personalizing bricks. Those are still there. They were removed and placed on a platform back in a patio area. If you're interested, you can go back there and pick those up. I think they had something tonight where you can go and they have it again on Thursday, I believe. Wanted to let you know I signed up for the public record training representing the mayor and all of council. I'll be taking that session in October. Harvest Fest is coming up, I'm sure we'll hear a little bit more about that. It is on October 26th. I hope to have a list this evening, but I don't. I have it for work session of all the volunteer positions that we'll need. Should be a lot of fun this year. And I would also like to ask for an executive session in a place on our agenda where we have it in regards to the employment of public employees. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Law Director Jeff Forbes.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Nothing really new to report tonight, but I will just take a second. Executive sessions are, we don't have them all that often and I think this may be the first one that we've had since at least one new member, I think, of council. So I would just, I'll take a second just as a reminder to all of council, instruction to anybody who's new to council, and really just as for the public as well, that anytime the law is limited on the chances or opportunity for council to go into executive session, there are very limited circumstances. This is one of them. And I just remind everyone that what is discussed in executive session is, remains confidential. So even those that are here in the room, in the public here, won't get to see what's happening. The TVs all go off. And so it's just a reminder that what happens there is confidential and a reminder for the public that what we'll be discussing in there is confidential, but it falls within one of the exceptions in the state law. Other than that, nothing to report.
Okay, all right, thank you. Clerk or Council, Teresa Lally.
Nothing to say.
Chief Police Jim Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to discuss a couple of things here. Reference the incident at the alternative school at the community building on September 11th. There's a lot of stuff going out there on Facebook, social media and so forth, so I'd just like to clear the air of how that came about. It occurred on, I guess it's Thursday, September 11th. What had happened was on September 10th, the day before, student of the school went home and within about 30 minutes told his parent that he had seen a firearm, an individual with a firearm that day at school. Mom immediately said, well, we got to do something about that. She made a phone call the next morning to a faculty at the school, referenced what her son had told her. That's the first time Wenton Wood Schools had been brought aware of the situation. So I commend them on the job that they did right away. They immediately took action, contact administration. What they tried to do is intercept the individual getting on the school bus from his home and they didn't make it there in time, so he was on the school bus en route to the alternative school. They called us. We had an officer there within a minute awaiting him to get off of the bus at that time. The officer made contact with him. Without getting into the case in depth, he denied having a gun, firearm the day before on premise. He was asked if he had a firearm on him at that time and the officer had contacted with him. He said no, for the officer's safety, he patted the individual down and was found in his waistband on his right side. So after that, he did admit he did have it the day before. So honestly, you hear a lot of things, you know, you hear why didn't we know the day of and stuff. Everybody knew when we knew and when Wenton Wood School District knew. They took immediate action. Thankfully, nothing happened on the 10th, but I commend the individual for going home and telling his parents. We preach it all the time, see someone, say something. This is exactly how it works when it goes right. So we appreciate that he spoke up and said something because this is a 16-year-old teenager. I'm sure it's not easy, you know, to say something like that, so in fear of retaliation and so forth. So we're grateful with the way it went, the way the school board, faculty, staff, everything went down without a hitch. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know, other than a couple faculty in the building even knew when it occurred until after it was all over with. That's how smooth everything went, you know, panicking, students getting uptight and so forth. So I appreciate, I appreciate the school and everything they did to make a smooth transition. Individual was held, went back to court today and was held again tonight, today, which was jury trial, nurse trial, which is set for a month and about 30 days. So we'll continue to watch that and see how it progresses from the court system. After that, I guess last week, a few days later, we got a general threat through social media. Literally, it said going to shoot up Green Hills community today. That's what the threat was. We put it out after the fact, after we got it. We received it at 1:49 in the afternoon when we were made aware of it. Very general, so it doesn't really say exactly where at in Green Hills, but we immediately went to the two schools and had a presence. So a lot of people saw a heavy presence there during those two schools during dismissals. Long story short, on that case, it was a case in which the FBI contacted us, that they saw on social media the word "shoot up" popped up on their radar through this Instagram, Snapchat post. So that's why they brought the attention of the Hamilton County Fusion Center, which reaches out to Cincinnati Police Department, which reaches out to Green Hills. We got the notify 1:49 in the afternoon and by 7:00, the individual was identified and a knock on their door. No arrest made at this time on the individual. Juvenile made a very poor decision and worried, but we don't believe there's any kind of physical threat made towards the community and the schools or anything like that in Green Hills. That's where that would stand. Prior to that, since Superintendent Denny had come on board as the new superintendent, he's been great to work with, he reached out right away, we met, and school safety was a big discussion, you know, you take pride in school safety. So we've been talking about that and honestly, we've probably been talking a little bit more now since these two incidents have come up. So constant contact with the superintendent. where that would stand. Prior to that, since Superintendent Denny had come on board as the new superintendent, he's been great to work with. He reached out right away. We met, and school safety was a big discussion, you know. You take pride in school safety. So we've been talking about that, and honestly, we've probably been talking a little bit more now since these two incidents have come up. So constant contact with Superintendent Denny has been great to work with. Harvest Fest, like Chief mentioned, will be there 2 to 5 with our equipment out, officers, our bear cat from SWAT, one SWAT member will be there. So good time for the kids to come, jump around. I'd like to maybe get some flyers thrown in the library there. But great time to come out, so we look forward to seeing everybody there. Corporal Johnson, this year, this month, he's 23 years in with Green Hills Police Department. Although, I mean, it's been a pleasure working with him, a little that we get to work with him. Fortunately for him, he's got a good family business going, so that's why I'm like, full-time to that. Grateful that he stayed part-time with us. So he's just turned over 23 years with the village, so we appreciate his service to the village. We wrapped up the park talks this past week, so we appreciate everybody that came out to the park talks. Good correspondence, good dialogue, and love the people coming out there. So we look forward to, hopefully, in the spring, we'll shoot them back up. So we look forward to that. Cover a couple crimes for the month of August. We responded to 180 incidents, 180 incidents. We made one physical arrest. That was unfortunately domestic violence. We served five warrants. We attended 36 squad runs with the fire department. We investigated 29 parking complaints, eight domestic trouble runs. We issued 35 traffic citations. We issued 26 traffic warnings, and we investigated seven auto accident reports, which is a little high for us for seven during the month. Manager mentioned training October 3rd, so around the old Beachwood slash childhood campus, you'll see a heavy presence between us, Forest Park. We'll be there, both police and fire probably, I would imagine, too. So no alarm there. The month of October, officers will be wearing pink badges on their covered carriers for breast cancer awareness. And 127 criminal offense reports compared to 110, or 101 this year compared to the time last year. So we're definitely up, as you recall, in March of July, the highest we've ever been on criminal offense reports. There are some reasoning for that. I don't want people to think crime run rampant, but I will say it's a part of the reporting system and how I have the officer to report. You know, for instance, council member Hermes calls up and says, my car was rummaged through, and I had my change stolen out of my, out of my cup holder, my car. I don't want anything done about it, but I just want you to be aware of it, which we appreciate, because we don't know if you don't call, and you just say, I mightn't do anything about it. But you say, I don't need any follow-up. I don't need investigator. I don't need an officer to contact me back. You know, a lot of times, we would just report that as an information report, not a criminal offense report. When, in reality, it's a crime that occurred. Somebody took your possession. So I've instructed the officers to turn that into a criminal offense report. We can close it out, no follow-up at this time unless we develop a suspect. But that report gets reported to the state then. So it's more of a true accurate number of what the crime and criminal reports that were taken in the village. So when you see this fight this year, that's what I contributed to. It's not all of a sudden. It's just when they're reported, we're turning it in, and I'm reporting to you the crimes I've reported to the state of Ohio. If that makes sense. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Have you thought any further of putting any other sign, like we have on the curb, I mean, with the blinking lights on the stop signs, for example, or around the speed limit, so people will see something flashing and recognize it?
Right. You mentioned that at the last meeting, so I went back and looked, and, I mean, ultimately, that's a council decision, if you want to incur the cost of it. But just my quick cursory search was about, from looking at a map and where stop signs are, about 46-plus stop signs within the village. I found the flashing signs that you can put up, solar, whatever, anywhere from most expensive $2,200 to $1,200. Take in the middle average, about $1,500 per stop sign. So that's the cost that, I believe, the council would have to incur to actually put them on. And I would encourage, if you, if you did look into something like that, that you do all stop signs almost, instead of just picking and choosing, you know, which stop signs to put on, because I'm sure everybody around their house would like them if they're available. So, but it would be very costly.
Chief, are you aware of any communities that have made all their stop signs electronic?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not sure if they're out there or not, but maybe smaller jurisdictions that only have a few stop signs, maybe. But it's all relative, even to those smaller jurisdictions forking out, you know, $6,000 for three stop signs might be expensive.
Right.
You know, so it's all relative as far as that goes. Majority of the times, you see them at a lot of crosswalks, you know, school crosswalks and stuff, where they're a little extra sign.
I'm just questioning that, because sometimes somebody gives a donation for something, for traffic, for safety, or something like that, and perhaps it could not cover all the ones that we want to have, but some of it, maybe one or two at a time.
Right.
So that's, that's what, you know, that some people come here and say, you know, here's a donation today, use it for safety, like it was the last time. So I just wonder if that would be a consideration to start, little by little. In French, we say, petit de petit, z'offre son mien. Just by one branch and one branch, a bird ends up having a nest. So if we cannot do it all, perhaps we should have some consideration of that. Also, do you have any ideas or plans, or you have thought about it, the amount of children in bicycles and dark that have no lights on the bicycles? If, spring, we're almost getting to the winter, we are going to the fall and winter, but in the springtime, would you think that it would be appropriate to have some kind of, a little gathering for the police to give instruction to proper crossing the road, to small children I'm talking about, the bicycles that they have, and make sure that if they don't have the lights, and make sure that if it's daytime, how to do the signal that they're going to turn, et cetera. Do you think that, in your radar, you think that would be something appropriate for the spring to carry them to summer?
Absolutely. And we do. Coming up next month, we have bicycle safety
Okay.
course at a school that we're doing. I'm doing with the Fire Department.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. So we did it last year. It's every October, and we have it coming up. And it's, it's a couple hundred energetic kids, yeah, riding bikes. So, but we do, we set up stop signs, and then stop, and teach them the rules of the road and stuff.
That's awesome. Thank you.
We also have helmets. You know, it's not as much right now, but springtime, if somebody doesn't have a helmet for the child that rides a bike, they can stop on PD here and we'll get them a helmet. So.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
All right. I have the mayor's court report for the month of August. The bank balance, ending bank balance is $27,482.49. Checks to be issued, the state of Ohio, $1,100, $1,104. Cameron County, $39. Village of Green Hills, $4,331. That's all I have. Okay. Reports of committees, recreation, cable television, Rachel Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have not met, but we're planning to meet, I believe, the end of this week. And then for Waycross Media, I have a note that the live election forums that Chief talked about are starting one October the 1st on a Tuesday, and then the following day, Wednesday, October the 2nd, and it'll start at 6:00 PM both nights. And then the other, the only other note that I have is that today is a special day because it's Kirk's birthday outside. So if everybody will embarrass him and sing happy birthday and say happy birthday, I'm sure he'll appreciate that. So we're grateful for all that he does, and hope that he was able to celebrate his birthday instead of just working hard all day. That's it.
All right. Community Development, Jim Bonner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few weeks ago, we collected the spring/summer beautification awards, but it is now turning into fall, so it's time to look at fall beautification awards. Thank you to municipal manager for sending out the announcement. So the plan is we will be evaluating properties in the first two weeks of October to make an award by the end of the next, the October committee meeting, or council meeting. So, so that's in the works, and we are trying to schedule a committee meeting for this, hopefully this spring. And that's all I've got.
Services of Streets, Mary Harries.
Thank you, Mayor. We met today, a little bit after 5 o'clock. We did discuss some old business. The big news is the Ingram Faragut project. The pre-construction meeting is going to be held in October. Again, the grant, the grant covers 75% of the $850,000 project, and hopefully we'll have a start date determined by the end of the year. So I'm excited for that project to get going underway. The tree assessment, well, the new amount will be effective in the first tax bill in 2025. Just the reminder about the CDBG grant, we still don't, it's still pending, and that is for the town park pathway. Spoils, lanes repairs, the waterworks is working on a break just next to the property, and after that is fixed, we will proceed with our portion. DeWitt garage plans, the drainage, the engineer is aware, but no plan is as of yet. We talked about Ezwin one-way signage. We're planning with Green Hills, we'll need to contract that out. It is not one of our highest priorities, but it is on the radar. Sidewalk, the precision cutting, so that is the cutting of the sidewalks, they will come out hopefully this week, weather permitting, to do some markup about which sidewalk squares need to be paved, and maybe markup some that might need to be replaced as well. And then I've heard several compliments on the Wenton Road curve signage, the flashing signs. So people have noticed it, and I, I'm hoping that will help with our, decrease our crash rates at that location. Since it's been up, we have not had one. And then for new business, we talked about the leaf collection that the municipal manager mentioned earlier. It starts October 1st through the December 9th. Get them out to the curb. Do not put them in the street. The village plans on doing one pass each week for each street. Have it out on Monday due to, they don't have a set consistent schedule on which day it would be on which street. And just remember, if cars are blocking it, it's hard for them to get to it, so they might miss them one week, but if the cars are out of the way, they would see them the next week. The trees that are missing from Wenton Road that were run over by the truck will be replaced in the fall. Tree trimming will, on the, for walking on the sidewalks, will be starting shortly. And then we did talk about the mulch and upkeep needed at the Bradford Park playground. So that was the sum of our meeting. Any questions?
I just wanted to also bring up the situation. It was wonderful when I saw the truck that was cutting out all the extra that is on the street on Wenton on both sides, and it just kind of took away some of that greenish that was encroaching on the, almost on the road, and the passersby who ever wanted to walk. They did a very good job on that. It took everything that was hanging, or whatever it was, you know, and it was very well done, and left the area for the police officer to park in there very clean as well. So that was a really good job.
The hidden spot for the cruiser.
Well, it's not needed to be that hidden, but just, it's visual, very visual there. But sometimes it was kind of hard to, for you to probably park in there and so forth. There was a lot of things growing in there. So I'm really happy that that was taken care of.
Government Affairs, Lawrence Maruus, Maria Walter.
We haven't had a meeting yet, and as soon as Mr. Lee will have the meeting for finance and audit, but we'll have it together that same day.
Great. Finance and Audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council at your, your place tonight is a general fund recap. Just, just to highlight a couple of things, you'll notice that, that the income tax general fund receipts for August were down, down a little bit, but we may start seeing these monthly receipts drop some relative to the previous year due to the early child, childhood school closure at, at Beachwood. Just something, something we'll, we'll need to watch as we go along. Otherwise, the general fund for the year is, is, is still strong. The general fund balance as of the end of August was $2,887,256.15. On the expense side, we're spending, at this point, point in time, spent less than, than we, we did in, at the end of August last year. Current percentage of appropriation spend is right around 35%. And no new transfers from general fund. And none currently, but we may see some based on some legislation later on. So one other thing, just, just because I have, I have the floor, Maria and I will be doing evaluations of the village manager. Council have any concerns or questions that they would like for us to bring up, if you'd email that to either myself or Maria, and we'll bring that to them. If you could get those to us before the 26th, which is Thursday, we'd certainly appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Safety, Jeff Holder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also met today at 4:30, and some of the things that we covered were under old business, was ordinances. Resident had mentioned that it was kind of difficult to get on the website and see where the ordinances exist. Yvonne reacted very quickly, and we've got those moved to the homepage of the website, so it should be a little bit easier to access. At some point, you almost want to bring everything to the homepage, but we do feel that the ordinances belong, belong there. So thank you for mentioning that. We also lightly talked about the fire department levy. One of the key things is the need to retain a home rule, home presence with that. This levy will allow us to do that, to still have it within our control. Very important levy to consider, and more will be coming out on that through Waycross and the signs, as mentioned. Another thing that I was hoping to do, and we just took our first pass at it, is, I guess I'll call it an emergency preparedness audit. As you know, we live in a pretty crazy unpredictable world with all kinds of things happening. I, part of this is me being new to this committee, but I didn't think it hurt to go through and discuss what are the typical protocols in place, how accessible it is, is it for residents. Just at the initial stage of that is, it might be helpful to have a concise refrigerator magnet with key numbers on it to give to the residents, just so that we, we have our documentation. But usually, when you're under pressure, you don't go looking for a book somewhere, or, you know, dig deep for it. So how can we make that as accessible to residents as possible? Other things that we discussed under that was just asking the question, are there, is there any other grant money available? Yvonne specializes in that, and we'll look into that, see if there's any grant money to help us with increasing emergency preparedness in, in the village. Other things that we talked about, again, you'll find I, I like, and our committee, I believe, likes ideating, coming up with ideas. Doesn't mean they're always practical, always feasible, but one of the things that came up was possible, could we have a, some kind of indication to neighbors if there's an incident with a dangerous or aggressive dog? It would be different if there was an aggressive dog and something happened instantly, in some cases, extreme cases, that does happen. But I think there might be some benefit in also maybe a little bit of pressure put on a dog owner to watch closely their pet if it is a threat to neighbors or to other pets, for that matter. But I'm going to try to meet with you, Jeff, and see what's feasible and what's not on that part of it. We did lightly talk about stop signs. We, we all had our own stories of witnessing people go through stop signs and red lights as if they didn't exist. I think that we'll want to investigate a little bit more, and like, we have to, if we're going to do minimal number of those signs, you know, where they go, you know, don't want people saying, well, why do you get one and I don't get one? And we have to weigh that aspect of it. But also, and I don't know this, maybe you have some data on this, but how effective they are. In some cases, we were aware of one, the stop sign in front of your house where someone drove right through it as if it wasn't there, and my impression was, they were very aware there was a stop sign there. And we could put lights on it, and they could treat it the same way. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I think we want to look into it and find out as much as we can before we expend the money because of all the things that we have to spend money on. But that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll make one comment on the stop sign situation. The state's got a variety of guidelines and standards, and that's one thing that we may consider looking at, as to how does the state evaluate a stop sign that would require the flashing or the lighting and that sort of thing. flashing or the lighting and that sort of thing.
And I didn't offer, if, if there's any questions, I'm going to do my best to answer those.
And I did mention in the committee meeting that the state, when we originally put up new stop signs back in the 70s, we got a grant from the state to put them in, but we had to put them into the state standard, and they came into town and recommended a number of signs to be eliminated. And one of them was the sign at Jur Street and also at Ingram and Jennings. They didn't feel that that was a requirement, but we were able to convince them to allow us to put the stop signs up. Because technically, if your sign doesn't meet the standards and you cite people for running those signs and it doesn't meet the guidelines, they win in court. So you have to make sure your signs meet what the state wants them to meet. All right, moving on. This is an opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. When recognized, please come forward to the podium and complete the sign-in sheet verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident. Assuming nobody's a non-resident since nobody talked to me ahead of time, and state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes.
I've already signed in. That's Patty Endron, 32 Chalmers Lane, Green Hills. I haven't visited you folks for quite some time, and it's something I'd like to start doing more of, so hopefully we can get to know each other a little bit better.
I do have a comment. As, as I'm reading this, what we're allowed to speak about is legislation listed on the agenda. Okay, so my question is not legislation, but if I'm not mistaken, the Sunshine Law requires you to put down whatever the exception is that you're having your executive session for, and that's not on this agenda.
Well, it has to be made as part of the motion when they adjourn into executive session.
Okay, but typically it's supposed to be printed on the agenda to give notice to the public, the topic that you're actually planning on talking to.
No.
I'd find that not very acceptable. The other thing would be is this assessments on certain properties. I looked at what you're assessing for. I'd like to comment that the police chief, Jim Howard, has been so responsible in terms of if you email him anything that's a question or whatever, bingo, you get a response, and he follows up. And I want to applaud your, your practice of doing, really appreciate that. On the other hand, while this isn't on legislation, Yvonne, you can send in a complaint or whatever, and there's never a response. So, you know, I think we need to really up that.
Can we stay on?
But in terms, well, in terms of properties, that's why I'm getting to this, is because I made, it's here, authoring assessments on certain properties. I filed complaints on properties on Chalmers Lane that have paint and so forth, and that's, none of them are listed here, and I'm concerned because it seems like a blind eye has been turned to some, some things that are being reported. And I don't know how, do we have to copy everything to every member of council to get your attention? I mean, how is that?
Okay, well, stay on track, stay on your subject.
Okay, I am talking about code enforcement. So code enforcement, I'm assuming is what the certain properties.
It's on the ordinances or resolutions, your comments directly on.
It says anything on the, something listed on the agenda, since it's listed on the agenda, David. Listen, your gag orders.
If I can, if I can, let me, there are two opportunities on the agenda for the public to address council. The first time is limited just to the legislation that's on the agenda. The second time is for anything else that the public would like to discuss.
And I recognize that, and it's interesting that you want to have gag orders on the public. That's, that's kind of depressing.
Okay, okay.
And the fact that you don't have this on the Sun, and the Sunshine Law requires it to be printed here, Jeff, and you know it because I've seen you at the, I've seen you.
I know it absolutely does not require it to be put on the agenda for a regular meeting. For a special council meeting, you are required to identify the topics, not for a regular meeting.
Okay, that's a disappointment.
Thanks, thank you.
I didn't write the law.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, moving forward. We have no unfinished business, new business. Ordinance number 2024-003, or 0, not 0, right?
Oh, ordinance.
Ordinance, 03. Authorizing municipal manager to enter into a contract with Leo J.
Brilmeier.
Brilmeier Company related to structural repairs under the municipal pool deck and declaring a real and present emergency. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 2024-003F. Authorizing Leo J. Brilmeier Company to perform certain work related to the structural repairs under the municipal pool deck and declaring a real and present emergency. Do we need a vote on the emergency clause? No? All right.
You don't need a separate vote, no.
All right, just clarifying. Whereas it's been determined by a structural engineer that certain repairs are necessary to correct a safety issue under the municipal pool deck, and whereas Section 5.008 of the Village Charter provides for expenditures required because of a real and present emergency, when authorized by an ordinance adopted by the affirmative vote of at least a majority of all members of council, may be awarded and executed without the necessity of advertisement and competitive bidding. And whereas Leo J. Brilmeier Company is qualified to perform the required work, now therefore be ordained by the council of the Village of Green Hills members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the council of the Village of Green Hills has hereby determined a real and present emergency exists such that a necessity for advertisement and competitive bidding is hereby waived. Section 2, that Leo J. Brilmeier Company is hereby approved and authorized to perform work in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for certain work related to structural repairs under the municipal pool deck. Section 3, that the finance director is hereby authorized to pay Leo J. Brilmeier Company an amount not to exceed $200,000 upon submission of timely and appropriate invoices. Section 4, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the peace, public peace, health, safety, and general welfare, and shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. The resolution for the declaration of emergency is, is the need to authorize the repairs at the earliest possible date in order to rectify a real and present emergency related to structural safety concerns under the pool deck. Mr. Mayor, strongly approve of the.
If I, if I could, just on a procedural note, we don't typically, this is an ordinance. Resolutions only have to be read once and effective immediately. Ordinances typically have to be read twice, so if you want to act on it tonight, which I believe is the certain hope, you would need a motion to suspend the rule requiring it to be read on two separate occasions.
That's what I was, that's what I thought.
May I make a motion to dispense the reading twice for this particular ordinance?
That's what he did.
Second. Second. Okay, clerk call the council.
Ms. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Okay, been moved and seconded, spent the two readings, this ordinance.
Now moving.
Now the motion. Do we need, is the emergency clause as part of this?
It is incorporated within it. At this point, all you need is a motion to adopt.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Clerk call the council.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 2024-003-F passes.
We'd like, I'm real glad that this is taken care of because that deck falls, we have much bigger problems.
Right. Real issue with the pool that does.
Do we know how soon they'll be able to begin work?
Like two weeks.
Okay. Next is resolution number 2024-R22-F, authorizing assessment of certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Ms. Hermes.
It's an SNS, not an F.
Oh.
Resolution, resolution number 2024-R22-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below. And the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the village council hereby surmounts that the costs of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel number 597-0010-007300, 46 Emblor Drive, TH Property Owner LLC, cost of $518.02. Parcel 597-0070-001300, 6 Chalmers Court, Empar LLC, $261.54. Parcel 597-0060-005200, 45 Damon Road, M. David Plus LLC, $137.65. Parcel 597-0030-001500, 129 Farragut Road, Whackler 1 LLC, $168.84, for a total of $1,086.05. Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section 3, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I call for the approval of this resolution.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? I see a trend here, they're all four LLCs. Not a good sign. Okay, clerk call the council.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson? Aye.
Okay, resolution 2024-R22-SNS passes. Next resolution is number 2024-R23-F, accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2024-R23-F, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, in accordance with the provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing in January 2025. Whereas the Budget Commission of Hamilton County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this council, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council, and what part thereof is without and what part within the 10 mil tax limitations. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and its certification be and the same are hereby accepted. Section 2, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said village the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitation as contained in Exhibit A attached hereto and made part of this resolution. Section 3, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Second. Any comments? Nary none. Clerk call the council.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2024-R23-F passes. Next resolution, number 2024-R24-LNR, resolution authorizing settlement agreement with Robert and Terry Trinan regarding property boundaries dispute. Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Mr. Forbes. There is an Exhibit A. Am I also reading that or just the resolution?
Just the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Resolution, authorizing a settlement agreement with Robert and Terry Trinan regarding a property boundary dispute. Whereas the parties are in a dispute over the ownership of certain portions of real property located in the Village of Green Hills. Collectively, they disputed tracks, and whereas the parties wish to avoid litigation over the dispute and have agreed to settle their differences with respect to the disputed tracks on the terms and conditions negotiated by the parties. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into a settlement agreement substantially in the form of an agreement attached hereto as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that the municipal manager is further authorized to execute any and all related documents and take all necessary steps to complete the terms of said settlement agreement. And section 3, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Good. Clerk call the council.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2024-R24-LNR passes. Okay, next thing on the agenda, council member comments. Down the line, anybody have any comments?
Just a reminder, council, we have our, our work session, our CPR.
CPR, yeah. CPR work session at 6:00.
Refresher.
At 6:00.
All right.
11:11:11 at 11. Better not stay at the comments.
All right, municipal calendar. That was the first thing on the municipal calendar. The next, we have a work session on the 8th. Anything else on the calendar?
Just a reminder about the election forums on Waycross on the 2nd.
And 3rd, right?
Yeah, the 1st and 2nd. Tuesday, October 1st and Wednesday, October 2nd.
1st and 2nd, okay. At 7?
It depends on what the topic is.
No, at 6, both nights.
Issues have a different time.
Oh, just kidding, that's all, that's all the notes I have, just kidding.
Okay, what is the, do we know the time?
Issues, 8 and 8:30.
8 and 8:30, prospectively, right? Eight and 8:30, prospectively, right?
Proposed tax levy 15 is at eight. Levy 16 is at 8:30, okay, on Wednesday.
I have a calendar invite from Waycross for Tuesday, October 8th, at 8:00 p.m. also. Does anybody know about that?
Nope.
No.
I'll call them tomorrow and sort it out. It's a calendar invite from Waycross Media. Yeah, I thought there was two as well, so if you can help me out, Tony.
I think I forwarded the message to-
The one you forwarded today was the October 2nd one.
Yeah, I would have forwarded this like after the last council meeting, I think, to you and to you.
Right, but that was the one for the, the second.
The second, yeah, okay. Check on that. Let us know.
Let us know, yeah.
Great.
Okay, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet. Verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills or a nonresident. And state your comments if you have questions. The questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all their time to other speakers.
Good evening. Thanks again to council members for writing a letter to the Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, and asking that the agency comply with the 2021 court order to specifically address scientific evidence related to the health and environmental impacts of RF wireless radiation, including 5G. I'm glad the council also addressed its desire to keep home rule regarding the installation of cell towers. Earlier today, I sent Yvonne, Brenda, and Teresa a link to forward to all of you. It's an online action alert created by the organization Environmental Health Trust. Due to time constraints, I have condensed text from it to read aloud right now. A number of bills are moving through Congress that would fast-track wireless deployments, including cell towers. This action alert asks Congress to, one, restore state and local government's zoning authority over the placement of wireless facilities; two, protect our national parks and forests from wireless proliferation; three, require the FCC comply with a court order issued by the U.S. Court of Appeals in a 2021 lawsuit, and complete a new rulemaking to update its RF wireless exposure guidelines prior to enacting any legislation that would increase wireless proliferation; four, ensure that all federal broadband funding is used to deploy wired broadband, which is faster, cheaper, safer, more secure, and a responsible use of taxpayer funds. It also asks Congress to support HR 8082, which would return control over wireless deployment to municipalities. At past meetings, I did already provide printed information to you about HR 8082 and asked that you contact our federal lawmakers and ask them to support it. The action alert asks Congress to amend several bills and oppose several other bills that would exempt many cell tower and wireless antenna deployments from environmental and historic review. It also addresses problems with other telecom-related bills as well. For a complete list of the pending bills, you may visit ehtrust.org/congress. Upon request, I'd be glad to provide you with more information about these bills as well. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'm also an elected official. I serve as the Democratic Ward Chair for the Village of Green Hills. That's precincts A, B, and C. Like the dovetail on what Ms. Weicker talked about earlier in terms of elections. And I don't know how to fit things in in terms of complying with your description of what you're allowed to talk about matters before council, but I'm assuming elections are something that you all care about, so that's, that's why I'm here. First off, I'd like to point out that the Democratic, Wyoming Democratic Club is holding a Meet the Candidate Night. It's tomorrow between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. I'd like all the listeners to be aware that they are invited to attend. It is the Woodlawn Community Center. There'll be about two dozen candidates that will be present that you can meet and hear about their backgrounds and so forth. It's a tremendous opportunity to get to know these folks and have put a face to some of the information you might get from the League of Women Voters. The other thing I wanted to bring to the attention of all of our audience would be that the Board of Elections has put out voting in the November 5th presidential election. So the deadline to register or update your name and address would be October 7th. You can do that online to register or to do an address change up until 11:59 on October 7th. The early voting starts over at the Board of Elections, which is at 4,700 Smith Road, 45212, which is Norwood. Now, they've made 18 different days available for voters to go and vote early. So you've got three different ways that you can vote. You can wait until November 5th, and there's going to be tremendous lines this year because of the importance of this election. You can apply for a mail ballot, which will be mailed to your home. Those go out in the mail on October the 8th. Now, you can fill out that ballot, and they have a sample ballot online that you can look at, so you'd be ready to roll with that. But you can either mail it back in or drive it over and drop it off at the Board of Elections. Then on Election Day, the timeframe for voting is from 6:30 a.m. until 7:30 p.m. We do have the Democratic slate cards here for any and all. These were passed out door-to-door to all of the residents of the Village of Green Hills. And if there's anyone who needs one to reference, I'd be happy provided. My phone number is 851, whoops, that's the older number. It's 368-7956. I brought a friend with me. You probably recognize this lady. Her name's Kamala Harris. We have wonderful, we have wonderful-
Do you feel this is appropriate?
It is, it is. Before council, it's something that is for the public to be aware of. I'm here, if you want to ask Kenny Burke and come and give his little story, you could do that too.
Okay, all right. Continue, continue.
It's a free world. I have 41 seconds left. So this woman is tremendously qualified, as are all of these folks that are on the Democratic slate. I invite you to mark your calendar tomorrow between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. Come meet these people. Compare it to the kind of asinine stuff you've been seeing from the Republican Party, and there's no question, it's obvious who to vote for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, go into an executive session. We have a motion, somebody?
I make a motion to go into an executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee.
Can I second it? And we'll adjourn from, do a roll call. Roll call. Oh, yeah, roll call.
Are you going to give reasons?
He just did.
Employment of a public employee.
What?
The employment of a public employee.
The employment?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk call the council.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Borner?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Okay, and so it's been approved to go into executive session. There will be no action of any sort taken at the end of that executive session.